Hi Steve. Did you guys have any problems getting on?
No, it worked out fine.
Okay, it's kicked me out twice in the last five minutes.
Don't take it personally.
And now I'm on the, I'm on twice.
Are you recording right now too Lisa?
Yeah.
It says up at the top, "Recording."
Why did I pause it?
For August 24th, 2020, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Councilmember Kurtzwell. Let the roll call show everyone is present this evening. And we'll move on to the approval of minutes, August 10th, 2020. Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Okay, there's a couple of things on page five. The last paragraph states, Councilman Kibble stated, the last numbers he, it should say heed at a, an apostrophe D, seen was that the city is missing 18% of the residents. I'd like it added that haven't completed the sentence, or the census, excuse me. On page six, the, the motion at the bottom was, it said the motion was made by Kibble. And then the support was made by Kibble and it was actually Kennedy. And on page seven, the motion was made by Kennedy and supported by Walton. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Kibble. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
On page two, under the Police Chief Report, second to last sentence there where Chief Sovik starts off, he said, "He then stated he wanted to give," and what the video shows is, "a shout out to Lieutenant Baki." So a shout out needs to be added in there. And that's all I had.
I have something.
Councilmember Richards, go ahead.
On page three, where I spoke in the first paragraph at the top of the page, regarding the 390 property, I know that I stated that it's going to cost $200,000 to excavate peat and debris from that property. And that's probably a conservative figure. I'd like that included, thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'd like to move the minutes.
One second.
As amended, excuse me.
One second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. We'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Kennedy?
Go ahead and move the agenda.
Was that you Councilmember Walton?
Yeah.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to move the agenda this evening. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion passes. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. Lisa, go ahead and give it a dozen seconds here or two and see if anyone goes ahead and raises their hand.
We do have Linda Hyaduck who would like to speak.
Linda's from Senator Runstead. Whenever Linda's ready, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, wonderful. Good afternoon, or good evening as it were. It's been a long day. Yeah, my name's Linda Hyaduck and I'm from Senator Jim Runstead's office. And I'm just at the meeting tonight to find out what's happening in the city of South Lyon and to remind everyone that our office is here to help you solve problems, to help you with ideas that you might have for legislation and that we're here to serve you. Most people I think in the meeting have my number, but I will give it to the general public. So I'm going to give you a minute to get a pen and paper handy if you need to reach us. And our number is 517-373-1758. And you can reach us at senjrunstead, R-U-N-E-S-T-A-D, at senate.michigan.gov. And you're all looking well and I thank you very much for the privilege of attending this evening. Thank you.
Thank you Linda.
There are no other hands raised currently.
Thank you City Clerk Deaton. At this time, we will close public comment and move on to the discussion of downtown with Nate Mack.
All right, good evening everyone. Last Thursday, we placed 16 feathered flags along Pontiac Trail in eight different locations. You may have seen them as you've been driving by. Also last week, Tina Archer of Lyon Township, Andrea Meyer and myself of the Kensington Valley Chamber, presented to the Michigan Downtown Association about the Show Your Love for Lyon Task Force Campaign, kind of how that came together. That went really well. The, the task force has really ramped up. Just today, we received the, what are they, the 24 inch by nine inch corrugated boards that we're going to be passing out to businesses. So hopefully be able to get those out soon. Last week, or on the, on August 13th, not last week, the DDA Board had their meeting. They voted unanimously to cancel the Cool Yule for 2020 due to COVID-19. We had some discussions about other events as well that we're looking at maybe not having this year just due to the pandemic and the risks that are associated with it. The drilling for the soil borings at 390 took place today, so we're hoping to have some results back from that. And then I also have been in touch with Main Street Oakland County about moving up in the Main Street program for the DDA. I had a discussion with them today about moving up to the select level, which is the third, like the highest level in the Main Street program. And they said about an additional $100,000 of services and funds would be available to the DDA if we were at that level. So I'm going to be, we're not going to be able to do it right away, but that's something that I have set as a goal to work toward within maybe the next couple of years. I also spoke with the MEDC about the Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. I'm going through the prerequisite training courses right now and I've had some discussions with Paul about it as well. So yeah, that's, that's all I have for you tonight.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead if you have something for Nate.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nate, the question that I had for you is the training or certification you're going through, and maybe Paul can answer this too also, is this the certification that would have allowed the city to get a grant in the spring? We didn't have anybody on staff that was certified. Would this, would this have helped us get that, that grant?
It would allow us to be put in the pool of other communities that were submitting grants because they only actually had so many dollars available. So I think it was only seven communities out of 48 or something like that that submitted that actually received the dollars. But it would have afforded us the opportunity to potentially receive one of those grants. That's correct.
Okay, so the certification is pretty important then to the city, correct?
Nate, you want to go through that?
Um, yeah, so what it does, it, it's a pretty labor intensive process. There's a lot that goes into it. It's looking at the zoning, looking at development plans and sites and working with the MEDC to develop that. So I, I want to say that it would be something that's at least worth me going through these trainings to look into to see if it's feasible for us to do it. We may be doing some of these things already. But it's just, you know, another thing that we can utilize to help, to help the city move forward, so.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nate, I was just wondering if you happen to have heard from Andrea from the chamber at all about the, I know we were talking before about the possibility of them still doing the scarecrows, hoping that maybe something we could salvage out of this year. So I just wondered if you had heard anything on that.
No, I haven't heard from Andrea about that yet.
Okay, I'll mention it to her. Just, I think it would be nice if we could still do something.
Yeah.
If I may, we were, Carol contacted me or mentioned to me last week that they had expressed an interest in trying to do that again this year within the downtown. How that was all going to take place, I don't know, but it was brought up in conversation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Nate, you talked about canceling some other events due to the, the COVID-19 situation. Any decision made yet on the downtown trick or treat?
There has not. That was one event that was not discussed at the meeting. I want to bring that up at our next board meeting to see what, because like, from, from my understanding, there were quite a few people downtown for that event, quite a few families and stuff, so. That's, I would say leaning towards probably not happening.
Okay, well just keep us in the loop as always, thanks.
Will do.
Councilmember Dill, go ahead.
I'm sorry, one more thing. Some people have actually asked me this and I, I'm usually kind of on the conservative end of this, but I mean, do you think that we can do trick or treat at all? Like whose decision is that? In the neighborhood?
In the neighborhoods?
Yeah. Who decides that? I don't know.
I don't either. I, I don't think it would be, I mean, the city could maybe offer a recommendation that people don't do that, just to not, you know, promote people being around each other a lot. But I don't think there's any way that you can say you can't go door to door.
Yeah, I just wondered if there was, if there was some kind of rule on that, just thinking that we could be creative maybe and have candy at the end of driveways and have people, they're already going to have masks on.
Right. Yeah, that could be something we could do too. Yeah.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you have, and to address Lisa's very good point, two issues. Is the government decision on whether or not to have Halloween, that's on the governmental side, and that can be either the DDA having the Halloween festivities downtown. And the city always passes a resolution every year as to the time period in which Halloween will be for the city. That, that's the governmental side of it. I don't see where the city's going to be doing that this year, so we may not be, I don't know, I don't know what the powers to be are planning, but that may not happen. But on the private side, you do have subdivisions that may decide to have their own little Halloween party, you know, for people in their subdivision. And you're right, everybody's wearing masks. And if you do it subdivision by subdivision and let these subdivisions do what they want to do, you're not going to have that many kids anyway, so. If our subdivision decides to have a Halloween party, I'll participate for the kids. I'm going to decorate my house. I'm not going to allow this pandemic to completely and totally ruin the year. Going to do something fun.
Anyone else have anything to say this evening? All right, thanks a lot for the update Nate.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the Fire Chief Report and Chief Vogel.
Evening Mayor. Two quick items. I reached out to the county late last week regarding the tornado siren in the Lake Street parking lot. I didn't get much out of them. They're still waiting for quotes. They're still thinking it's going to be more than $8,000 now. Fortunately, we won't have to pay any that's on the county. So I told her, as soon as they know more, to please let us know, especially if they're going to plan on when they're going to repair it. And lastly, we finally got some numbers on the fire truck repairs. I'm going to prepare a document. It's pretty intense, many different items that we're trying to get fixed. But the short of it is, we should have the ladder truck fixed soon for about $3,500. So we're going to move ahead with that. Some of the other big ticket items for the other trucks we're debating, so. That's all I have tonight. I got a couple items on agenda, so.
Thanks Chief. Looks like Councilmember Kurtzwell, you have something, go ahead.
Yes, Chief Vogel, this is, this goes specifically to you, but it would also apply to Chief Sovik. When a first responder in another city passes away or has an unfortunate passing, do you as part of the camaraderie call that department chief and extend condolences from the city of South Lyon? And the example is, is the horrible incident this past weekend with Sergeant Johnson with the Detroit Fire Department, his drowning in the Detroit River when he was trying to save those young kids. Apparently, he was an incredible human being, great coach, public speaker, worked with the youth in Detroit, and just lost his life saving two kids that were having a hard time in the river. Do we call that?
I always send a note. And I usually try to attend, but I'm not sure how this is going to happen during these times. I reached out to a Detroit friend and apparently this is a pretty extraordinary gentleman from what they tell me. And I would attend if we're allowed to. I'm not sure how it's going to happen with the governor's 100 people indoors. I don't know if they'll try to hold it outside or try to get an exemption. I'm not sure, but this is, it could be something to see.
But you would at least put a home call in.
Personal note, we have a stationary from the fire department.
Okay.
This one I sent to the firehouse directly where he came from, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Rob, I was wondering, I had seen the video of the Ariel for Novi. That, that looked like a very impressive vehicle. Were you pretty taken with it?
Yeah, so that truck was the Cadillac, right?
Yeah.
It was a beautiful, beautiful truck. Honestly, I have formed a small committee. We really need to see where we're going with this truck. We, in my weekly report, I stated kind of the three options. I told the committee, which is being led by Deputy Chief Weir, we need to really dig into the numbers. And first, we need to do a risk analysis. Does this city need the truck? And for us, it's pretty simple. We need an Ariel. If anybody has seen the designs for the 825 West Lake Street project and some of the other exciting businesses coming, this is a truck we need. So do we keep nickel diming with the current? Do we spend some money in refurbishing? Or do we look at purchasing, maybe doing some special financing? We're trying to be really open minded. I think I picked the right people and I'm hoping to have something for you by the end of the year. So yes, the question is, that truck was amazing.
Yeah, it certainly was impressive looking. They seemed to have given every consideration imaginable. I was kind of curious, I don't remember specifically, but if I'm not mistaken, our Ariel was a demo. It was probably only like a year old or something, but.
Yeah, so it, it was built in 2000. I think it arrived in the city in 2001. It had some pretty significant miles on it. One of the downside of that truck was it was literally serial number one. It was the first one they ever built like it. And I think it's slightly part of our problem is it's got some glitches for the first one they built. The problem South Lyon has is our station's pretty old. We, we are limited on door size.
Yeah, right.
So that kind of, you know, that's, we, like tomorrow, we're having a manufacturer bring a truck from Wixom just to look at it, see if it fits and just kind of see what kind of options there are. And I, I want to make sure that I present a report that is accurate and complete.
Well, I think your examples of the, you know, the new buildings that are coming on are perfectly appropriate. We also have the high school and we have MSG. So, you know, those are things that an Ariel would certainly not be able to, or without an Ariel, you wouldn't be able to prosecute a fire anywhere near as effectively, so.
This small town is perfect for, you know, a nice Ariel. It just, it's just a great little small town, but it does need to be protected. And like I said, if you continue to see these developments, they're not single story.
Right.
They want to go up. So that's what, part of what we keep in our mind when we're considering these type of things.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to tag on to that comment and ask you a question. And, and does Lyon Township have one of these?
They, I believe they've been approved. I believe that they're specking it out. I reached out to the gentleman who's in charge of that and I heard that they're still in the planning stages.
And how long would it take that truck to get down to Pontiac Trail and Eight Mile? Because there is a three story, I believe that's a three story senior living quarter that is being built down there, so.
Correct, by Kroger.
Yeah, yeah. So the point of it is, is it's not only South Lyon that could use it, is that from a mutual aid standpoint, you may be the first one to the scene down there if there was ever an incident.
There, Lyon Township is going through some significant growth with their senior citizens, buildings and their homes. What, what concerns me about relying on Lyon Township is how busy they're getting. And I'm not sure they're going to staff that truck. This is all assuming, right? So if they're going to continue to staff their ambulances and fire engines, I'm not sure how quickly we can rely on that aerial device to come from Lyon Township.
Okay.
Um, Green Oaks is very old. They decided to not purchase a replacement and it sits way over on 23 and Silver Lake. So the question, that would be something, it's a good question that I would ask the chiefs, how they plan on staffing it when they get it, because I know it has to be at the station on Grand River, I believe. So I'm not sure. I don't know how they would staff it. If they staffed it 24 hours a day, it would be quick. But if they're going to rely on their ambulances and fire engines, I'm not sure if they're going to rely on a callback or jump staffing. I'm just not sure.
Anyone have anything else for Chief Vogel this evening? Thanks Chief, as always. Great update. We'll move on to the Police Chief Report and Chief Sovik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got a couple of new business items, but I just wanted to give everybody an update on the, on the powerhouse situation. I know that we have had some complaints and some calls about, and some questions like, why is the powerhouse still, gym still operating, you know, under the executive orders? And I think I had mentioned months back that regarding these executive orders and enforcement, Paul and the City Attorney Lisa and I got together and we discussed some of these possibilities. And she did some research for us and she concluded that the best practice was to, one, just take a report, investigate it, and then forward it to the appropriate agencies for review and enforcement. So, so while the gym had been open for a while and we had started receiving more complaints, we did write a report in the violation of the executive order. We investigated it. We logged every single day and every single time that they were open. We forwarded the report to the Attorney General's Office. On the 13th of this month, they sent an agent down to survey ceased and desist letter at the gym. And the owner, after he got this, he was curious as to why this is happening. And obviously, he's been violating the executive order for a while. We had a short conversation. And instead of fighting it, he chose to shut the gym down the following day at noon. So, so when we do get these violations of executive orders, if, if, things may not seem to move as quickly as everybody would like it to, and it may seem that we're not actually enforcing these, but actually we are. There was a process, a best practice process by our city attorney, and so we have been doing so. So I just wanted to give you a heads up and update on the powerhouse gym situation and the way that we handle other executive orders. So that's pretty much our practice. And just want to give you a heads up on that. Other than that, I don't have anything other than my new business items this, this evening.
Anyone have anything for Chief Sovik tonight? All right, Chief, we'll hear from you here in a bit. Thank you.
Yep.
On to new business this evening. Acceptance of the State of Michigan Training Council Burn Building Grant and Purchase of the Burn Building.
Good evening again. So the state of Michigan came out with a grant for fire departments to purchase training props or to put on a training class. This money comes from the fireworks sales. I'm pretty much on the record of saying I don't like Michigan's fireworks laws. However, there is a benefit. It generates a lot of money. Back in, I think it was January, we submitted a grant to purchase two shipping containers that we plan to build a training building that we can train in. We can either pretend it was on fire, we can light it on fire, we can practice with our tools, searching. I believe this is a high priority need for the fire department. I worked really hard with Doug Barney and Ron Beeson to try to figure out the best place to put it. We had to make sure that we left room for the cell towers so trucks can get access. If anybody's been to wastewater, you can see where we staked off. It was approved by Mr. Barney and Mr. Beeson. We were approved finally for $5,000 in 18, or $5,018. However, we were able to find it cheaper. If we accept this grant, the money would be sent to the county who would then red check to the city and we would then purchase the containers. Any questions?
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to approve the grant from the State of Michigan Training Council for the sum of $4,700 to be deposited to 101-000.000-698.600 fire grant account to purchase two shipping containers for the purpose of a firefighter's burn building from Capley equipment account, 101-335.000-978.000.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any further discussion on this item? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I have a question.
One moment, Councilmember Richards. We're going to go to Councilmember Kibble first.
Well, Chief, I think that this is a great investment that instead of us having to wait for a building that's going to be demolished or something for us to do training in before it gets taken down. And it seems like this is going to be very flexible where you have, you can create different scenarios that are working in, out of that same building. So that's really terrific.
Yeah, it's been, so every year, we would either travel to Wixom or to Hamburg Township to utilize theirs, which kind of left the city unprotected. And it just became troublesome to me to travel that far. With this building, we plan to reach out to Salem Township and Green Oak Township to do some joint trainings, let them utilize the building. You know, we're all going through some new firefighters right now and I think this is a priceless piece of equipment.
That's a good selection.
Councilmember Richards, you can go ahead whenever you're ready. Councilmember Richards, you can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Chief Vogel, uh, can you, I appreciate the pictures that you've sent us on the matter. Could you give us a a little further description of the of the size and the weight of this building? And and uh, uh, is this going to be shipped in as one piece or assembled as two pieces uh on site?
So the plan is to have some ground prep done. Have you been out and seen my stakes that I put in the grass?
No, I haven't been out there.
So like I said before, we had to be very careful that we had to make sure that the cranes can still get to the cell tower that is on city property. So on that front piece of vacant property there by the fence, we're going to put some crushed limestone down that'll allow for drainage. They will then bring in two shipping containers. Both are 20 feet by 40 feet long. We're going to make a complete box. They're going to put them side by side. And then with our own staff, we're going to ended up kind of building a house. We're gonna uh build some rooms, some walls, put in some doorways, some windows to practice. And the weight, I'm not sure. I can't imagine a shipping container is that heavy. They're just a steel container. I'm sure you've seen lots of them. This is just another way they're they're used, obviously, to reutilize these containers. You can make a pretty great burn building for a pretty inexpensive cost. Like Council Kibble was saying, getting a hold of a house these days to burn is just not practical anymore. It's too expensive. The asbestos is too hard to remove. And we learned that when we took down the Caddy House. So this is just, and we're not just going to burn it. We're going to use it for all sorts of. For, and with the state law requirement for continuing education, this will allow us to keep up with the state requirements that are coming sometime. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they're one unit. They're not a not assembled unit then. Uh, they're shipped on one low boy truck or low low rider.
Yeah, you see them. They come over on the ships from China, right? And they, the the ship will be, will have hundreds of them. Well, eventually they just retire them and they, you can, you can see them. There's a lot for sale on the internet, actually. And people are building houses out of them. They're building storage units out of them. We're just going to take two of them. We're going to put them side by side just to try to make a single-story home.
Okay, then they're going to stay there. They're not gonna, we're not going to resell them or anybody. We're going to keep these, right?
Well, because they're purchased on a grant, um, there's some some laws that covers about what you can do with grant. Now, what I do like about it is um, if it ever becomes an issue of their location, we can move them. But I don't ever see that that becoming a problem. And I don't see us selling them because when you take something on a grant from the State of Michigan, it gets really tricky on selling it.
Okay, I have no further questions, uh, Chief Vogel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, could I just ask one more question? I was just kind of wondering, Chief, is there water in that location for you? Is there a hydrant or something?
Yeah, so um, at the front of uh the wastewater building, there's a hydrant. We train with it all the time. Um, it's going to be about 300 feet away, but trying to put those buildings anywhere else, it just was going to be troublesome for wastewater. Um, we all agree that putting them kind of off to the side in that vacant lot just shouldn't cause any problems. And you know, just so we have to roll up a little bit of extra hose, I think it's a price to pay. It's
Thank you.
Worth it. Thank you.
All right, and we have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Dill. Do you have any further question? City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Yeah. Dill? Yes. Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chief. On to new business number two this evening, new phone and internet provider for police, fire and city hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, public safety complex, the police and fire uh currently has a phone system is very unreliable and has consistently failed, leaving citizens unable to call their local police and fire departments for assistance. Uh, current system is made up of the Avaya phone equipment and phone switch. Uh, however, it's maintained by other companies such as C B T S, Windstream and A T and T. Uh, at the end of June 2020, Windstream informed us they could no longer assist us when our phone system went down due to the phone switch needing to be replaced. Uh, so we had an independent contractor come out to confirm Windstream's diagnosis. Uh, we did contact different vendors. Um, there's certain compliance, things that we have to be concerned with from a police department, from a police standpoint. And originally, Paul and I were talking about and and Chief Vogel talking about looking into this 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 coming year and presenting you with a uh with a formal agenda note and a purchase for next year. However, due to our phones being down so often and so frequently, uh, we have to expedite the process. So uh, the driving force behind this, our administrative assistant, Brianne Sawyer, she's on the phone along with Jeffrey from Comcast to answer any questions that you may have. But um, the contracts have been looked over by our city attorney Lisa, just to make sure everything isn't compliant and looks good for her. So I know that we provided a lot of information for you. Um, but if you guys have any questions regarding anything, please, please bring them forward now. We'll do what we can to address your your questions and concerns.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
There's an awful lot of um different pages with a whole lot of money spoken to on them. Could you just give me what the the monthly is going to ultimately be?
Sure, Brianne.
Yep. So monthly um for the phones um is going to be, one second. Do you know one page I don't have? So for Comcast specifically, um, the monthly total um is $2,290.20 per month. Um, I think right now we pay $2,129 um between C B T S, Windstream and A T and T. And that is for all of the buildings in the public safety complex as well as city hall.
Terrific. So that that seems like a very good deal. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Uh, first off, I'd like to uh thank Brianne and uh Chief Sovik, Chief Vogel and uh and Paul Zelnick for uh the answers to the the questions I had earlier. I thought uh it was it was well researched, well put together. And uh hopefully will go quite a ways as far as addressing the uh the issues you've been facing over there. Uh, and along with that, I'd like to go ahead and just make the motion to approve the Comcast phone and internet service provider contracts and the agreements.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Kibble, to approve the Comcast phone and internet service provider contracts and agreements. Do we have any further discussion?
I have something.
Councilmember Richards, go right ahead.
Uh, I've talked to Leanne about this this afternoon. And initially I had uh some skepticism about this, but she explained it to me thoroughly. And uh, I'm fully in favor of this at this time. Uh, I also might add that Windstream has definitely let us down by not alerting us to all of this earlier because we we're really hurting on this, okay? And I think we ought to present them with a penalty fine of some sort for doing this, uh, leaving us hanging like we have. Anyway, thank you very much, and I'm fully in favor of it.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Does anyone else have anything to add? Thank you. Thank you, Brianne. Thank you, Chief Sovik. Thank you, Chief Vogel and and City Manager Zelnick for your efforts on this. City Clerk Deaton, would you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Sure. Kibble?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business number three this evening. Phone infrastructure contractor Challenger Technologies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This also goes along with uh this new business number two. Um, we need an individual company to uh provide the infrastructure to run the fiber optic lines to each building within the public safety complex. Um, as we said before, this was not budgeted for the this year, but because of the because of the uh the nature of where we're at right now, we need to move forward with this. Um, we will be asking in December for a uh a budget amendment from both the police and fire at the Capitol Outlay, uh, 100-1, 100-330-970 for the police and 100-335-970 for the fire department. Um, this is really a cost savings. There's a couple of reasons why we're doing this. One is we're going to own the lines, but the Challenger Technology is going to um, I guess, do the construction on it. Um, it's going to be more secure than if it was going to be in an aerial setting. So having the having the grounds buried under line is going to be a lot more safer and uh less vulnerable to outages as opposed to having in the aerial setting. Now, when Comcast talked with us, they talked about bringing lines in. It's going to be $750 per point. And what this allows us to do, this allows us to put the the police fire, the main police building and the main fire building all on the one line. So instead of paying an additional, you know, 2250 per month, we're only going to be paying $750 per month for all three of those buildings in one line. So uh, this will pay for itself in 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 less than a year. So um Challenger Technologies, we have worked with. They actually installed our access points for in-car cameras uh on our uh our building. And they also ran the uh the lines for our watch guard in-car cameras to set up the server in our in our building. So we are very satisfied with Challenger and um some of the other competitors that we went out to, they talked highly of Challenger Technologies and they weren't going to be able to beat their price. And they're very reputable. They do very good work. So I think it's the sooner that we get this rolling, the sooner that we can get our new phone lines in. So um, just asking you guys to support this motion for uh Challenger Technologies to do some underground boring for us.
Councilmember Kittle, you had something?
I was just curious, Chief, is uh is Challenger going to be doing tech support too? Just to follow up, to make sure the system remains robust in the event that there's some kind of a problem along the line?
They they will be doing, they will be doing all the maintenance on the lines if needed.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Brianne. Uh, Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Let's go ahead and make the motion to approve Challenger Technologies contract in the amount of $12,128 for the infrastructure installation.
I'll support.
This is by Councilmember Kennedy, supported by Councilmember Walton, to approve the Challenger Technologies contract in the amount of $12,128. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'm thinking you guys will probably feel pretty liberated by having reliable communications now. So that's that's a big step.
This will allow us to put out less Facebook messages and Nexo messages, letting everybody know that our phone lines are down and here's how to get ahold of us. So yes.
Councilmember Kennedy, did you have something to add? Go ahead.
I did. Well, I just, again, I want to thank the uh the group that put this together and got the answers to the questions, especially verifying that the uh the material that was going to be used for the installation was going to be totally com, totally agreeable with uh with Comcast. So that at the end of the project, we don't have any finger pointing or play the blame game here that uh the problem is due to uh the wiring that was installed as opposed to the system that was actually installed. So I certainly appreciate you going through that when you uh you vetted the vendors here. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Council, just a just a just an F Y I for you. Brianne was the really driving force behind this. All the questions that some of the city council members had today, she uh she took that upon herself and she answered those because she's most familiar with the project. She's attended several Zoom meetings and had several phone conversations, conversation with our city attorney and Comcast legal department. So uh, she just did an outstanding job on this. And um, so I just want to recognize her because she did just a great job. So thanks, Bree.
I think we all knew that.
All right, does anyone have anything else? We have a motion and a second. Uh, City Clerk Deaton, could you please lead us in a roll call vote?
Richards? Richards?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Walton?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bellchat?
Yes.
Hey, thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you again to everybody. At this time, we'll move on to new business number four, road assessment and improvement plan.
This is the mayor. Tonight, we have our first discussions on addressing the long-term repair of our roads, including discussing revenues, expenditures, funding alternatives, and how to plan and move forward with determining a long-term solution for repair of our city roads. I've attached within your documents information on the road improvement plan, Pacer study, the 2021 local and major street revenue and expenditures reports with corresponding pie charts, maps, graphs, road condition photos, an example also of a road section for you to look at. And as a result of completing the Pacer study, the surface rating of all our city roads, we've been able to estimate cost to repair the roads within the community. As such, we now have taken the first step to develop a long-term plan, which can be 10 or more years for funding the 23.5 miles of local roads and the four and a half miles of major roads we have in the city. The attached Pacer study within the roadway asset management plan indicates a surface rating of each one of the roads based upon the evaluation process of each road within the community. The Pacer study indicates that the majority of our roads are in poor condition. Included within the document is a projected 10-year app, 10-year average Pacer rating for various funded funding levels to improve the roads. There's also a map included that identifies the condition of each road depicting in a particular color based upon the condition 1 through 10. Road repairs take on numerous forms, including crack sealing, patching, milling overlay as well as reconstruction. Attached also is that road cross-section that illustrates what's contained in the average road, sand, gravel, you know, pavement materials. And about also attached the example of those roads' conditions within the community. From that, you can see the various conditions. With the revenue expenditure reports for local and major streets, it's outlined the same numbers that we have within our budget and those pie charts do correspond with that. The funding for the city, we receive the majority of our funds through Act 51. Act 51 funding comes from revenues from gasoline and vehicle registration fees. The distribution is calculated using the most recent census population figures and the total miles of road we have within the community. That's why I keep emphasizing at each one of the meeting, make sure that you fill, get people to fill out their census reports because each one of those persons not filling out costs the city dollars every year. Other examples to fund road maintenance include or repairs and improvements include county road funding. That's funding directly received from the county for a particular road, such as the road funding we're getting for Liberty Street. Tri-party funds, which is a combination of city, county and road commission funds for a particular improvement. And S A Ds, which is a special assessment district, which is a specific levy designed to recover costs of improvement that benefits the property it's it's levied against. It benefits by by the improvement. Federal funds, we get directly by use or abused based upon the requirement of receiving those funds. General fund tax dollars allocated in the city budget to be used on city expenses. Bonds, which potentially is a loan that is designated to pay for a particular improvement. Or potentially levy road millage, which is voter-approved by the residents of the community. Based upon a millage, if we were to levy a mill, one mill would generate approximately $400,000 per year in additional revenue. Currently, we have the ability to levy one, just over one additional mill under our our millage capped amount. Anything more than that, we would have to go for the voters or the electorate. Bonding for roads is a means to start quickly on road repairs. With a bond, you're able to start out with funding road improvements right away, instead of even having to wait for the tax dollars to be collected to pay for a particular project. However, a bond costs the city interest expense. So bonding for a million dollars for 10 years would cost So bonding for a million dollars for ten years would cost the city an ex, approximately an extra two hundred thousand dollars in bonding costs for the life of the bonds are obtained to fund me, to also fund a special assessment district process as well. In relation to infrastructure, when funding road repairs, we must look at the infrastructure that has been included as part of the project, including what's underground storm sewer, curb and gutter above ground manholes, and what what else might be below ground is water main or sanitary sewer lines. In conclusion of this, we've outlined some of the items that need be discussed and determined in moving forward and developing the city's road improvement plan. Internally, we move forward with allocating time and funding to prepare data on road funding options and determine the pros and cons of each. We review road segments and group them together in paving projects based upon conditions of the road as well as funding availability. We review infrastructure that needs to be repaired or replaced as part of a prior to a paving project. Ensure that's in the pipeline where it would be done in a timely manner before a road segment would be repaired or reconstructed. We report back periodically to city council on the process by a city council agenda item. Where we also have pertinent discussions, make plans and decisions when necessary on moving the process forward. Ultimately, we have a long-term road improvement plan that will outline the funding and the timeline for paving segments within the community.
We have a couple of members of Public Roth and Clark here tonight, Roland Alex, as well as Mike Darga, to go over the Pacer study and discuss some of the items that are related to their related to costs as well as for recommended treatment or estimated cost per lane mile of road. So Mike or Roland, I'm not sure which ones, who wanted to talk first.
I'll start off, Paul. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I probably did a great job explaining the process and the options that are available to the city. This isn't an easy topic to talk about, you know, aging aging infrastructure is something that all communities are having to deal with. And they require lots of large costs to maintain them. Pacer rating that we completed a year and a half ago is a nationally recognized rating system. It rates roads from zero to ten. A zero rating of a road means the road is almost rubble and needs to be completely reconstructed and a rating of ten means brand new. As you can see from later down in the package around page sixty, for those of you who have it on PDF, you can see the average rating of the city's roads is two point six. So that's a scale of ten. That means that approximately ninety-seven percent of the city-owned roads are rated at poor or very poor. Unfortunately, this is directly related to the amount of money the city has been budgeting for road improvements over the last few decades. Without significant additional funds, the city will continue to see roads deteriorate. And as roads age, they become more and more expensive to repair. So unfortunately, like like you could expect, you let your car age for a long time. It's a lot more expensive to repair that car after ten years if you haven't done maintenance on that car in the interim. It's also significant to mention that although our current governor ran on a platform of fix the damn roads, I don't think the city should expect either state or federal funds, additional state or federal funds to be forthcoming in the near future. That really means that it's it's incumbent of the local communities, local cities or road commissions to develop funds on their own. So with that, Paul did a great job of outlining some options the city has, but it's unfortunate that we shouldn't be expecting any additional funds, significant funds from the state or the feds. Mike, do you want to jump in and maybe delve into some of the cost per lane mile and some of the improvement options?
I'm sure. If you look, I guess, the easiest way to tell you would be the chart. Right after Paul's write-up there, his report to council, there's a chart that's the estimated cost, or I guess it's not a chart, it's more of a spreadsheet.
It's on page, it's on page fifty-nine of the PDF, I believe.
Yeah, the estimated cost of improvements in twenty-twenty dollars. So last year, the city received a grant from the county to update their Pacer ratings, which you guys did. And so these ratings were all within a year. So they probably haven't changed much to today. As you can see, we have, you know, good roads, eight through ten, you don't have really any maintenance to do. But when you get down to like a seven, that's when you really need to start putting money into your roads. Start doing your crack ceilings all the way down to like a five, where you do your non-structural overlay. You really want to be at a point where you're jumping from a five to a seven, ideally. Unfortunately, we're a little lower here, down, you know, two to three. So we're getting real close to full reconstructs, which are very expensive. And these costs that we came up with per lane mile, it's based on kind of just a quick cost, a quick cost estimate for intended road improvement. It's not, we didn't go out there and look at each road. This is just a generalization for the Pacer number. So once we dial down the exact roads that we're going to be improving, we're going to have to go out and do stuff like get soil borings, look at what's under the pavement. Because that's one thing, the Pacer rating is only a pavement, like a visualization of the pavement. There's no investigation below the pavement. So as you can see, the costs get pretty high down there. You know, you're talking about a million dollars a lane mile for these reconstructs. And I mean, this, that includes stuff like storm catch basins and some sidewalk ramps and curb repairs. Where not all the roads in the city have that. So there are, to me, instances where it's a little, little under that, you know, it might not be nine hundred twenty-five thousand, you know, it could be eight hundred thousand a lane mile. That's, what else did I want to say? That's about all I wanted to cover.
And I, I think that those are scary numbers when you start to think about, I mean, they worried me as a taxpayer too. You know, those are per miles worth of road and that you have a lot, you have twenty-four plus miles worth of road. And I think what I would like to, my last kind of summary would be, you have to start somewhere and you can't keep kicking this road or kicking this can down the road. And I think Paul's idea of forming a committee, trying to look at funding, I think that's a great first step and I, it's it's just imperative that this starts to be dealt with and taking small steps, baby steps is important because you're not going to be able to write a check for thirty million dollars, obviously, to fix twenty-four miles worth of roads. But you got to start somewhere and this is a great start.
And this is all coupled with so many other things that we're working on. When you look at the sanitary sewer evaluation and storm sewer evaluation that we've been doing over the last year and a half. The water and sewer rate analysis, which would be funding some of those particular repairs underneath the ground, you know, reviewing all the other infrastructure that we have. And as it might have mentioned also, we start to look at different segments, different areas, different neighborhoods. We look at the worst-conditioned segments of road. We still look at how we're going to address the better-conditioned roads with almost immediate funding and doing crack sealing or other minor repairs. But when you start to look at the infrastructure that needs repair based upon those evaluation studies, you start working on those repairs of, and start budgeting for those items. So when the road segment comes in, the time to be paved, those things are already taken care of and then the road and the road can get get completed. But there's so many different potential options that we can look at. And just, you know, within the staff and then in future, as Roland had mentioned regarding getting the public more involved in this, we nail down what the funding potentially is be, would be, that we have the champions for that, to be able to carry that out within to the community. And everybody gets to fully understand what we, what we potentially have. Because with the funding that we have now, we cannot start a road improvement program. We can basically do minor repairs. But we have to talk about based upon the levels that were described within the projected ten-year average. We would need to do, you know, over two million dollars worth of road repairs a year in order to start making an impact on the water infrastructure, what our road system actually looks like. So we can gently each inch up every single year based upon the average condition of our roads. But it's something that is going to take a long time and that we do in fact need to start. I did give you copies of certain sections of road and some of those numbers that that you're looking at, I think it was one through six. You know, the first segments that you start to look at are real good segments of asphalt roads. And then you look at number two, which identifies roads that potentially could have crack ceiling done to make repairs. Number three is potentially a four-inch overlay or maybe even reconstruction based upon, you look at a very damaged area compared to be something that's perhaps down the street that you may not have to do total reconstruction on. Number four looks maybe potentially a milling overlay that you can do on that segment of road. Number five was identifying a brand-new segment of concrete road within this, in the city. And number six is, you know, some, definitely some major repair on segments of a concrete road within the community. But with that, we'd like to kind of open it up and hear your thoughts on this and obviously start to move forward with and start to get going on, you know, this particular project because we realize this is for always, this is always going to be in the city budget. There's always going to have to be road repairs that are going to be made, whether it's sections or just doing milling overlay, whether some are doing total reconstruction. But you will all, will always be doing crack ceiling every year because you want to lengthen the life of that particular road. And as soon as you get done almost with a ten-year plan, you start working on some of those same roads again to be able to prolong them even more. But with that, we'd be happy to start answering any questions that anybody may have.
Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Roland, in the discussion, you started off talking about the cost per lane mile. And at one point, then you just said it was a million something per mile of road. I'm looking at the chart that says per lane mile. Did we get the the terms swapped there or we? I mean, because there's a difference between lane mile and mile of road. And I think we're using the terms interchangeably. So perhaps?
Is per lane to lane residential. So I did misspeak. I apologize.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, it doubles the cost, doesn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And when we're looking at that spreadsheet that's in there, the repair cost column, that's per lane mile then? On that spreadsheet?
Correct.
Okay, so if I look at a subdivision street, as you said, that's twice the amount minimally for that.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
I'm kind of happy that we essentially have a tale of two cities. Half of the community is newer roads from the new subdivisions. And then unfortunately, the other half of the city has a lot of old antiquated infrastructure that's typically undersized and hasn't been really kept up with. And that that adds a great deal of cost to, I mean, as was exhibited on Hagadorn, you know, we're not going to pave over the top of bad storms and things with, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. In the long run, you're spending money that you're just going to throw away if it fails on you quickly. So try to find the answers to get the newer subs, I think, trying to maintain those is going to end up being relatively easy and they're probably the SADs aren't going to be nearly as hard for them to swallow as some of the stuff that's in the older areas that don't have the same value in houses necessarily on a front, the frontage on those roads. So I think we're going to have quite a challenge trying to make those ends meet. So I just wanted to bring that forward.
Councilmember Kurt Swile, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, in contrast to the last speaker, the subdivisions, I am sure will have tremendous opposition to SADs. As you probably know, their taxes are some of the highest in the city. And then to impose special assessment taxes on them because they're in a district to repair the roads, I I think that's going to meet up with a lot of challenges. I think the best thing, my personal opinion is, is rather than alienate the communities from the old and the new and create that division, I think it's a shared cost. You live in the city and the financing probably should be done through a bond. Thank you.
Allow me to go ahead and throw my two cents in. Man. You know, I tend to run up here glass half-full guy. I think we knew this was a problem. The graphics speak for themselves. For anyone that doesn't have it in front of them, I mean, it's take a red Crayola crayon and then throw in a little black. And the black is worse. So it's my suggestion with a, with as as close to sense of urgency as is really we can have is in following Councilmember Kurtz, I agree. We got to get the community involved in this. We have to get a group together working on this. Where are the roads in the community that have structurally sound sewer and water underneath? Where, you know, where's everything at? I mean, this is going to be a, this is a massive project, one that will be here longer than all of us. And we need to get some good people in this community on it immediately. This is the most, when I'm out and I am socializing with folks pre-COVID, this is the thing people want to talk to me about all the time. And, you know, the, the saying that we don't have the money for it, you know, starts falling on deaf ears relatively quickly. So it would be my suggestion that as quickly as possible that we try to get together a group within the community and we start working together immediately on some sort of game plan. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Just, just one other thing, just to muddy the water a little bit more, even though you see the condition of all the roads throughout the city, what is missing there is this doesn't include Lafayette Street at all. And I realize that's a county road. But there's obviously a certain commitment that's required on our part to address the infrastructure below that road. It needs to be addressed. We rent the flooding down by, you know, the Good Day Cafe and the and the rest of that before we can even pave it. So there's additional money beyond just what's on these sheets of paper that is sitting out there in front of us going to be required.
Mr. Ritter, if I may, in another community which I worked, worked with in the past, it was a combination of not only a special assessment district, but also city dollars and millage that worked to fund a road improvement program. And with the special assessment district, it was, I believe it was seventy-five percent, you know, or sixty percent for that it was divvied up based upon the specialist assessment district or the unit that it actually benefited. And the rest of the dollars came from the city. So it always wasn't just on those taxpayers within that particular subdivision street. But it was also funded by additional dollars through the city and whether it was through general fund, Act Fifty-One, the millage, or whatever it may be. So it was a combination because you have constantly have people moving in and moving out of the city, new subdivisions being built. People that are moving with, moving in the city don't necessarily want to have a high millage levied on them because their roads are fine. So those individuals may not vote for it. The individuals who need their road repair will, you know, look forward to having some sort of road improvements done. And this is only for public roads. This is not for private roads. This is not for any apartment complexes or any other private developments that are in where those individuals maintain the roads. The only thing I would caution about is getting people involved too early. If you start saying that we're working on this road thing, they're going to expect their roads to be paved this year. Usually, an SAD project takes more than a year from the start to the finish from whether it's either initiated by resolution based upon council or it's initiated by the residents together, fit more than fifty percent of the signatures of the road frontage of the individuals within that community. So that's one way that takes that. You know, I think getting people involved and getting them to understand that, I think that's a good process as long as they understand that this is not occurring and the roads are ready to be repaved right away. Because we do in fact have to work on that infrastructure, start to group some of those things. So if we can start to work on some of those items and then start to get people together, then I think we can start a really good education process.
Councilmember Kibble, then I'm coming to you, Councilmember Kurt Swile.
Just to be clear, when I was suggesting the SAD, it wasn't as though they were going to bear the cost of the entire, or my, my meaning wasn't for them to bear the entire cost of the project. It was to end up supplementing what our buy-in that the repairs would have been. So I probably should have said that out. So I probably should have said that out first.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, do we know if our payment of state shared revenues is, is continuing to decline?
We haven't gotten the latest numbers. Patricia, if you want to comment, because I know they had another revenue sharing and another conversations regarding Act 51.
They did, they had a meeting today. I haven't gotten the full report yet. I've gotten just some preliminary things. They are stating at this point, the decline is not as bad as they originally had estimated to us in May. But then again, there's still a decline. They're still going to be projecting lower numbers than what we would have assumed to have gotten with our original estimates last October. So I think in another week or two, we'll have a better idea. But truly, I think a lot of the information isn't going to be available until October when the budget is passed, unfortunately. But we will have at least a little bit better picture in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
That was a good question, Councilmember Kurtswell, just a second, what Patricia said. I had a quick meeting last week with Spencer and Doug from Plant Moran, and they had the same exact answer. So the numbers are preliminary, but you know, at least they're not catastrophic yet and hopefully they aren't. But, and, and I hear you, City Manager Zolik, on, on expectation versus the process. But, you know, growing up here and knowing these roads, I didn't expect them to all be red. So that's, that's quite eye-opening. And I just, this is something that I think we've all been talking about with the infrastructure from coast to coast, if you watch any local news. But this is something that we definitely, I know there's a million other things going on in the world right now, but the infrastructure of the city, based on this diagram, has got to get bumped up to the top.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Mayor, about coming back to a future meeting and discussing some of those funding options and starting to look at alternatives for better understanding to kind of look at what we're looking at and looking at money, money coming in from water and sewer for some of the infrastructure, the evaluation of roads, the timing for, you know, grouping some of these sections together, the funding that we could potentially have either through general fund, Act 51, or millage and showing how much money we can actually put together on a fairly, you know, in, in a timely basis to start making some of these things happen. I think would give us even more discussion and topics and get more people involved in this. And we do start to recruit those individuals because we want to have the individuals that are generally interested, interested in the whole city, not just the ones that say, you know, in my backyards, the MBs that say, you know, get my street done, when are you going to do my street? We want the, the individuals that want to have the input on doing everything within the whole community.
Well, this has been very eye-opening. Does anyone have anything else for anyone that's here?
I'd like to say something.
You know what, Councilmember Richards, you go ahead and then we'll come over to you, Councilmember Kennedy.
Having looked at this completely, I have to agree with Paul's assessment of the situation. At this point, we need a blue ribbon committee to formulate an attack plan, okay, of how we're going to go about this in a routine way. And we need to cooperate with Priscilla because she handles the money and can tell us what's, what's feasible and what's not feasible, okay? And how many years it would take to do it. Personally, I would recommend that we look at the bond solution for the worst roads in a package deal on the first agenda, okay? It, I would, I hate to say this, but paying $200,000 on a interest might be a better option than paying $400,000 or more on the future cost of concrete and asphalt. Because I believe our economy is going to gradually go downhill. It might be to our advantage to get the worst first and have a plan for the seal coating next and the, and the, then the other regular streets in between from both ends. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Councilmember Kennedy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for Mike Darga, just changing gears here a little bit. I'd like to talk about the, the water plant and wastewater projects there, Mike. I've talked to, to Paul about getting a copy of the project plan for those, those projects. He tells me that you're working on that. Do you know when that Gantt chart's going to be available?
Yes, we're waiting for the, actually the contractor is the one that submits that information to us. And they submitted one last week. We had some comments on it and they said they'd have one probably tomorrow is what they said. So hopefully the next few days here, we'll have an up-to-date one for you.
Okay, because I mean, you know, the project's already underway. Somebody's working according to some plan, hopefully. So there's something out there. Certainly would love to see a copy as soon as you can and understand that revisions might be forthcoming following that.
As soon as we get it, we'll get it to Paul.
Great. Secondly, where do we stand on those, the filter projects since, you know, HRC decided to incorporate that and take that on? I understand we have to have a window available that, you know, we didn't want to begin the project while demand was high here in the summer. We also need to be able to take them offline, let them come up to ambient temperature in order to paint the things and then do the filter changes. Do you have any idea when you expect to start the filter project?
Not at this time. Right now, we're focused on getting the tank up because those improvements have to be done first before you can take the old tank offline.
Yeah, but that, the filter isn't dependent on that tank. It's not a dependent item on the project. Those are two independent projects that could be going concurrently.
We'll talk to the contractor about it and see.
Because we're obviously going to miss the window once it gets cold and then the, the tanks can't be painted and prep for it.
All right, well, the ground storage tank is what the contractor was focused on first.
Yeah. And again, I guess I'd know that if I had a copy of the project plan. So appreciate that, Mike, thanks.
Does anyone have anything else for Roland or Mike this evening, based on the road assessment and improvement plan? All right, thank you both for being here very much. Have a great rest of your, your night. With that, we'll move on to the budget. So anyone have anything on the budget this evening? Okay, we'll move on to the manager's report with Paul Zolik.
I just want to remind councilmembers to continue to review the proposed zoning ordinance. We'll still have an upcoming meeting coming before City Council and Planning Commission. Again, the set reminder regarding the census, we're going to get residents to fill out that census. And I hear that is an actual good item to get the public involved in is that we have this committee, we get people to understand how much more money we do in fact get with that census towards our upcoming road pro, program. Proposed charter amendment, as you know, we received confirmation from the governor's office on the official language. I've included a copy of that letter with your packet, signifying the approval of the amendment for submission to the voters at the November general election. We did get some information, I think all of you probably received something in the mail also, or an email about the MML conference. It's going to be a virtual conference this year. Please, please let us know if you're interested in attending. Lisa will be able to handle that within the office. We do have in fact the upcoming audit. I believe most of you were contacted or all of you were contacted by Plant Moran. And also Roland and Mike Darger also here tonight in case anybody had any questions regarding the water tank change order that we had. The process is moving along, but it was determined that the location of the tank and the, and the pilings that were in the ground were in direct conflict with a underground large electrical set of conduits that were within, closed within concrete. And unfortunately, due to that, whether it was discovered prior to the construction or prior to being bid out or now, unfortunately, it's either A, you have to remove that conduit or you have to move the tank. Moving the tank isn't necessarily just the cost in itself from one location on that lot to the other location on the lot. It's the pilings that have to be put in place because of the relocation for the reinforcement or stabilization. But we have a copy of that change order in your packet. We're lucky that we're still way under the engineer's estimates for that project. It does increase, matter of fact, increase the project, but you can see how much it would have increased if we had gone the electrical route instead. We're having weekly meeting, progress meetings with the contractors on site, discussing some of the other items that are taking place or going to be moving forward with. We potentially may be having change orders. This particular change order, unfortunately, we had no choice in it. And if we would have waited to three or four days or something deciding on whether to move forward with the change order, we are charged per day based upon equipment and personnel that are on site that are not allowed to be used or relocated to other locations. So that's upper to $5,000 a day based upon all that equipment that is on site. We have answered any questions you may have regarding the manager's report or specifically because individual from, individuals from HRC are still here if you have any questions regarding that particular change order in the packet.
Councilmember Kurtswell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I wanted to know is on page two of the change order, and that deals with a budgetary issue, I just want to make sure I understand that we appropriated 4.3 million for this project and that the contingency that was included in that 4.3 is sufficient to cover the change order. Is that correct?
Not exactly. So just so you know, it's a, it is appropriate, it wasn't appropriated. So what I was trying to remind, what we were trying to remind the city of is when this project was originally budgeted, we had come up with a engineer's estimate of $4.3 million. We put it out for bid. It came in at $3.3 million. So it came in a million dollars less than the projected engineer's estimate. So that's what the 4.3 is alluding to. I should have included some additional info. I know it's tough to remember all the different bids that came in and things you've approved. But you approved a $3.3 million project. And as engineers, we recommend 10 to 15% contingency to be expected on projects like this because there are unknowns that both you'll run into underground or other issues that you run into. Does that answer the question then that you approved 3.3, but the original budget was 4.3?
Okay, so we approved 3.3. Does that 3.3 million dollar budget include a contingency fund?
The 3.3 was the low bid contract, the low bid amount. So that was what the amount that was awarded to the low bid contract and that did not include any contingencies.
Okay, that's, that's the bottom line question that I wanted to know. So where is this money coming from to fund the change order?
The money will still come from the water and sewer account, but what we will be doing as we move along, and we have pluses and minuses based upon their bid, based upon materials or based upon changes that will occur, we will have to come back before city council if in fact the total amount is going to be more than what the original bid is. But that won't be decided until a much later date.
Okay, so we're still within the 3.3 million. So you would have an ability to spend money out of that 3.3 million. The problem's going to be is if you cap out at the 3.3 million and you have $400,000 or $500,000 of additional change orders sitting out there. So right now, you're, you're kind of okay. I just wanted to know where the money was coming from.
Yeah, so we will come back as we start to tabulate the pluses and minuses within the change order and we come back and we find out whether it's over or whether it's under based upon when everything is completed on the project.
I, I have seen construction contracts that have included a, a contingency fund actually in the bid or in the cost. HRC, do you, have you seen those or do you not deal with that or?
So every community handles it a little bit differently. There are pros and cons to both approaches. The city I work closely with, City of Berkeley, they always end the recommendation letter to the city from HRC, we will say we are recommending a 10% contingency. The negative of, so the positive of that is that's upfront to the residents and the council. The negative of that is now if you're the contractor, you saw that was approved, now you know the city already has a budgeted 10% over budget that they've already earmarked for your project. So the way that South Line has done it, without putting that in writing, you're not already letting the contractor know that you have this extra 10%. Of course, they could have, they could watch tonight's meeting and, and could have gotten clued in, but at least this way, by not including a contingency at the original approval of the contract, you weren't already tipping your hand, if that makes any sense.
Well, that becomes a game that they're going to play, then you don't approve the change order because then the change orders just, somebody didn't bid the contract right then. If you're always going in and doing a change order, somebody did not detail that contract well enough to catch everything. But this was, I understand this was underground, so you're not going to catch this underground.
Correct.
And, and where I've seen, I, I just, it's just, what I've seen is that these contracts that carry the contingencies generally are dealing with outdated, let's say, a, a commercial building that's 90 years old that you know you're going to run into stuff. So this kind of would have been a candidate for a contingency in it, not that you have to do it, because you were dealing probably with underground infrastructure to some extent and this is an old city, so.
That's a good point.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Roland, go ahead.
But just to continue, the way that Paul described it though is, you know, you're going to have some change orders that are going to be over budget. Towards the end, you'll have some units that come in under budget and, and so you'll find some balancing as the project goes along. It just happened that the very first one happened to be a three and a half, 4% unknown change order that came up.
Thanks, Roland. Councilmember Kennedy, you had something? Go ahead.
I did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure that we're, we're all on the same page here because, you know, it, it isn't like the electrical line was totally unknown. The problem was it was on a separate set of drawings that weren't cross-referenced to the drawings that were being reviewed when the project was being bid and laid out and that they came across the other set of drawings after the fact. I mean, the, the drawings, they have another set of drawings that showed that line there when they did the project and estimated it and, you know, so forth right up front. They didn't have all the drawings available. So the question becomes, you know, I mean, things happen like that. What process change are you thinking about implementing, Paul, that might prevent that from reoccurring in the future? Some way of making sure that we look at all the drawings for the next project we bid because it's kind of an expensive lesson to learn there that it wasn't all contained on the set we were looking at. And again, I'm assuming that that information that's been given to me is accurate.
Yeah, the information was actually found, I believe, from a, a park set of plans from the water department and discussions with, with Hubbell Roth and Clark. You know, based upon all the information that they had when they looked at the plant and looked at that material, they thought everything was right or it was moved over farther. And with those particular plans, they're happy, obviously they discovered that with that review. You know, there's always extra set of plans that are out there somewhere that somebody never thought about. And I, I can't really say what's, what's going to prevent something like that from happening in the, you know, in the future on that particular site. I have to trust the staff that we have and the engineers that they in fact did look at all of the necessary material. Obviously, they didn't look at this one. This one kind of fell through the cracks because it was another set. But we're continuing to try to do the best on site and I don't know if HRC has anything they want to add because I know they worked with water and sewer and making this discovery.
I can't speak directly to the discovery. I think the way you described it, Paul, was pretty accurate. The point that you made in the very opening that I think should be stressed again is regardless of when this electrical conduit was discovered, it still would have related, it still would have resulted in additional costs. And that is because the ideal location of the tank was, was what we provided. The tank, the, if we would have known about the, and so that, that ideal location of the tank only required sheeting around one side. because the west side is the property line. And that location of the tank was far enough away from that property line that they didn't need sheeting. They could furrow out a slope and still be on the city property. When you move that tank to the west to miss that electrical conduit, now it's put that tank closer to, and that's the way the contractor bid that item, was he bid only the sheeting on the one side. So when you've moved it to the west closer to the property line, now the contractor has to put sheeting to protect that property line. And if that would have been known during bidding, they would have included an extra cost for additional sheeting. So you would have seen a similar cost regardless when in the process this was decided. But that's beside the point. The fact is that we need to do better and, you know, really look through the records, look through the archives when there's big projects like this and try to cross-reference as many plans as possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for city managers all this evening? All right, Paul, thank you guys from HRC for being here as well.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address. Please also remember there is a two-minute time limit. Lisa, does it look like anyone is in line or interested in public comment this evening?
There is not.
At this time, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to our council comments. Tonight, we'll start with Councilmember Dill.
I actually don't have anything tonight, so have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. We'll move on to Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just again tonight, I just want to remind everyone to complete their census questionnaire. The deadline for being counted is September 30th. So please go to 2020census.gov and complete it today. Also, please check with your neighbors and friends to remind them to do it as well. Time is running out to be counted. The amount of money that is allocated to the city based on the census will be even more critical for the next 10 years considering the current economic conditions and situation. We are currently at an 83.5% response rate. That means approximately 1,980 residents have not been counted in this city. For every person who's not counted, the state loses approximately $1,800 per year in federal funding. Just for the folks not counted in South Line, that equates to a loss of 3.6 million per year and 36 million over the next 10-year period until the next census is conducted. As has been mentioned before, that census results determine how much federal funding communities receive to support housing, education, transportation, employment, healthcare and more. Every resident needs to be counted. Please do your part and complete the census. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Richards?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have way too much to bring up, so I'll just limit it to three things quick. First of all, on the change order we just discussed under the manager's report, I agree completely with Councilwoman Kurtzwell and Councilman Kennedy's point of view and their position on stating the case completely. And I would probably go a little further, but I won't do it tonight. Also, on the site for the water plant, I've been over there, looked at things, and I've discussed some things with Paul. And I've also discussed with Ron Beeson, and I come to find out that while we've got all this wonderful equipment over there to do almost anything we want, it would take more than one more, a separate, probably two separate permits for us additionally to go with the Drain Commission to improve Yerkes Drain right there where they're going to go underneath it for this new line from well number seven. I'm very disappointed that, and I hope we could do that. It's a two-year project. Maybe we can accomplish this. Number three, the situation with 390 Lafayette Street that I mentioned earlier in the evening. This is a perfect example of something that I've been aware of myself. The average, the average citizen of our city has no concept of how much land the city actually owns, okay? That's, we're the largest landowner next to the school, larger than the school. A lot of our land has peat on it, okay, in a lot of locations and wetlands. This issue is going to come up in the future again and again and again. It would be desperately to our advantage to look at buying our own power shovel at this point in time. I'm sure you could get one for a reduced price, a used one. Cat or Kamatsu, they're excellent machines, work fast. Would save the city half a million dollars in the first three years, and the figures would go up from there. Five years, it'd probably be three quarters of a million. Thank you very much, and that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Richards. Thank you for being reminded of your time limit as well this evening. Let's go to Councilmember Kurtzwell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank all the residents in the city who have been spending the past six months working on their yards, putting in new landscaping, new porches, new patios, new decks. The city looks absolutely gorgeous. So I just want to thank everybody in the city who are, you know, taking the time to improve their neighborhood. And when you improve your neighborhood, you just really make South Line look great. So thank you, everybody, for all your hard work. I know it's been a hot summer. Next, I want to thank the seniors at Colonial Acres. Your front entranceway looks absolutely gorgeous. So thank you, seniors, for getting out and getting all those flowers to bloom. You look great. And last, I have been out in the grocery stores and wherever, and children I am seeing now starting to wear masks. So they are getting ready for that time in which they will be back in school. And I would encourage everybody, like I did this weekend, when I saw a couple of little girls with masks on, I told them how wonderful they looked and how darling they looked. And the mother pulled me aside and she said, "I can't tell you how important that comment meant to my little girls." She said, "You know, I tell them that, but they need to hear it from other people." So let's encourage our young ones, our little ones, our middle schools and any other teenager that's out there. When you see them wearing a mask, if you think it's appropriate, please thank them for doing their part. So good night, everybody. Have a good Labor Day, and we'll see you in September.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Walton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's hard to believe that it is almost September. Just a couple of quick shout-outs tonight. South Line area Historical Society is looking for volunteers for some of their programs that are upcoming. So if you've got a few minutes of extra time on your hands and you'd like to volunteer, now is the time. Get out there and help out. Active Faith recently received a grant for $2,500 from Farm Bureau Insurance to purchase kid-friendly lunch foods and snacks along with school supplies. And with that help, they were able to distribute 120 backpacks and snack-filled tote bags to school-aged children. That's pretty awesome. Two great era, local, gosh, I'm totally losing my train of thought. Two great local community things that we support, and I just hope everyone continues to support both of them. I know Active Faith is really doing a lot of extra hard work and helping out a lot of families right now. So they can always use your support. And Historical Society does a great job, and they really keep our historical village looking nice. So if you have a few minutes, go pull some weeds. They'd really appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you, Councilmember Walton. Councilmember Kittle?
Kind of on that vein, I always enjoy when I go through the village and you have that little flower patch that they've got over by the church with the sign on it that says, "Don't just stand there looking. Pull some weeds." I think that's really charming. I just wanted to comment on the farmer's market. It continues to have good attendance while I've been down there. So I'm really taken with that. Tim's got some new vendors come in, so it's nice to see with the shutdown of all these other things that we kind of relied on for entertainment or at least for some special interest. They've gone by the wayside, but the farmer's market has given us some reason to take that walk into town, grab some veggies or cheese, whatever. So I'm hoping that if we could build on that, just find little things that are, that'll help people rally to get out and try to communicate with each other without having to have masses of people. I think the farmer's market really hits that density point perfectly. People are mindful, they're wearing masks, and the visiting is kind of kept to a limit. But they're still able to be entertained by being down there. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kittle. I just have a couple of things. Obviously, I think the Pacer study was an eye-opener tonight, for sure. So we'll definitely have to stay on top of that going forward. Nate mentioned the Love for Lion campaign, really hopefully going to kick off here in the next week or so. I heard on 950 today, of course, the big box stores are doing better than they expected because of the money that they've invested in being able to deliver and what on so on and so forth. So while it may be a little bit more of a hassle, and that's not even a great word for it, but if we can please try and support our local businesses. We've got a great fundraising with T-shirts and stickers and signs that are going to be out. And if you could take a picture somewhere where you're supporting the Love for Lion, whether it's in the townships or here in the city, please do. Sometimes that can spur a little competition with other folks in the community to support our local businesses. So let's try and do that here heading into the fall season. And as always, be kind to each other. It's still been very difficult for all of us, and you just never know what everyone's going through. So be kind to each other. And with that, I will look for a motion to adjourn this evening. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Mayor. Move to adjourn.
Nice work.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody.